Good evening. Welcome to a regularly scheduled meeting of the Waterville City Council. If anybody would like an agenda, these are in a little plastic sleeve on the wall in the back from your way in, so feel free to grab one. Before we get going any farther, I will ask Councilor Stuffer to please stand and lead us in the pledge.
I join the ladies of the United States of America in the name of our wonderful citizens, one nation under God, universal, free, just for all.
And first up, we have a mayoral proclamation and it's mildly vague.
It's not.
How about part of your language? You can come up and join me in the front. Of course.
Sue is president of the council.
Oh. Thank you for being here. So this is a mayoral proclamation for the sandwich program, the evening sandwich and soup program. So I'm gonna read this, it says, "Whereas, the state of Maine is one of fourteen states in our nation that exhibits higher household food insecurity rates than national average, with sixteen point two percent of households struggling to put food on the table. Whereas, the Universalist Unitarian Church of Waterville began a volunteer evening sandwich program a quarter of a century ago in 1990. And whereas, the first evening of the program, only seven people were served. It is now customary for two hundred to three hundred meals per evening to be served, with a mind-boggling five hundred thousand-plus meals served since the program began. And whereas, it is important to recognize the volunteers who demonstrate commitment, dedication, and compassion while donating their time to assist such programs, including buying some of the food themselves and even preparing and cooking it at home. Whereas, the evening sandwich program has been supported by many other Central Maine churches and area businesses and schools assisting in this long-term success. Whereas, the city of Waterville is truly grateful for the important work of the evening sandwich program, its volunteers, its supporters for improving the quality of life for so many of the city's residents. Now therefore, I, Nicholas Isgril, Mayor of Waterville, on behalf of the city council, hereby recognize October 25th, 2015, as the 25th anniversary of the evening sandwich program Soup Kitchen, and encourage Waterville residents to recognize the positive impact of the program in our city, to thank those who volunteer to our and continue to give back to our community, and thank you so much." Next, on the agenda is community notes. Community notes is a time where if anybody has something they would like to say or discuss something that is not already listed on the agenda slated for discussion tonight, and how we'd be done to do so, if you'd like to do that, if you're not already seated up here, come up to the podium and let us know who you are and what you have to say. Counselor Wright?
I have on my purple and white tonight, which means Waterville versus Winslow in football. So I hope that we will have a great game on Saturday, and it is a battle of division, so please come and join the festivities.
Yeah, what time is that?
One o'clock. One o'clock K-Pop.
Very good. So what happens if there are wins though?
Well, I don't know. I don't know yourself.
It's gonna be a tough one.
It'll be hard as well.
It's a tough one when you live in Waterville and your last name is Winslow. You can't beat that one.
True that. I would like to take note that last Saturday, really impressed with the work of several areas of communities, including ours, and Mark Turner at Public Works for the Household Hazardous Waste Day. It was outstanding, it was held in Winslow. I had three households of stuff in the back of my car, and I was amazed, and once in seventeen minutes, I went through the entire process, everything removed, and it was just beautiful. Compliments to, I will say, State Representative Kathy Natto was there from Winslow, Ivory Villanueva, who's a select person in China, was there, helping with all of that. Good stuff, so hopefully people took advantage of it. It's one way of really de-glooming your basements.
Thank you, Counselor. Anybody else for community notes?
My Linda just asked me to come up, and I want to say I'm Fran Mullin, I work with Halky Northern Canaback, and we're very excited. We have a special visitor coming up from the Georgia Health Policy Center to review the community of Waterville, as far as what are our community assets, and we have a lot. So the next two days, I'm taking Beverly on a tour, and hopefully you will recognize some of these assets. We're going to the Albert S. Hall School and seeing their community gardens, we're going to the Waterville Food Bank, the mid-name homeless shelter, we're going to our beautiful Opera House and checking out City Hall, we're going to take a Waterville walk through our downtown, I'm going to KV CAP, the South Enteem Center, and of course, the Albonde Center, and can't forget the Muskie Center and the Maine Children's Home for a little longer, so we have a lot of community assets helping this community be healthier, and hopefully a really great prosperous community. Looking forward to seeing some of you.
Thank you. Scott?
My name is Captain Mike Ice, to invite you, everyone here, and everybody watching, to the Halloween Ball Party, we will be holding October 29th from 5:00 p.m. at the Hathaway Creative Center. It's gonna be dancing, music, singing. Also, costumes are encouraged, I just bear in mind, remember that this is a family event, so nothing too outrageous. And also, I'd like to run here, do just a few thank yous, let me know, to the South Enteem Center and South End residents, they're gonna be providing us with some nice yummy snacks, and also to the apple farm in Fairfield, who is gonna be providing us with some apple cider. Please come on out October 29th, starting at 5:00 p.m. at the Hathaway.
Anybody else for community notes? Counselor Bujan?
I just wanna remind everyone that two weeks from today is Election Day, and we have some pretty important provisions to put on the school board and on the city council, and make your voice heard, make sure you get out to the polls, and get your neighbors out to the polls, so we can have a good turnout for Election Day, and because it's on Tuesday when we would normally meet, I believe we're meeting on Wednesday instead of that first Tuesday, so.
Move to Wednesday. Anybody else? Okay, we'll move on to the group consent agenda, we're gonna have a motion to pass the consent agenda. Second, all those in favor? Unfinished business, order 1312015.
An order providing for sale of city property on Alba Terrace, be hereby ordered by the city council of the city of Waterville, acting as municipal officers as follows, that the city manager be authorized to sell city-owned property on Alba Terrace, as shown on the attached map, to Virginia Stanley for $1,000, and to apply the funds to the capital improvement reserve account.
Move to it down.
Second, all those in favor?
We do need a roll call. Do I get a roll call?
Counselor Stuffer?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Counselor Winslow?
Yes.
Counselor Mayhew?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Bujan?
Yes.
Counselor Rettler-Thomas?
Yes.
Seven in favor and zero opposed.
Great. New business, resolution 1342015.
A resolution providing for appointing Cynthia Pearl as civil constable, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Waterville, acting as municipal officers as follows, that the city council hereby authorize the appointment of Cynthia Pearl as a civil constable, with the term to expire in October 20th, 2016. Be agreed to resolve that the scope of the appointment of Cynthia Pearl is limited to the duty of service of civil process documents, and that Cynthia Pearl is prohibited from carrying a firearm while performing duties as a civil constable, and that Cynthia Pearl is required to list the city of Waterville as additionally insured on liability insurance policy of not less than $1.
Move to it down.
Second, is there any discussion?
Is Cynthia Pearl...
Is Cynthia Pearl...
This is totally new for us.
We... I don't think she's here, no.
Would you have anything you'd like to say to this?
I'm going to ask, point of course to, what happened to the people who were serving this constable, they resigned, Robin and Mark retired. Robin and Mark, tell us your retired move for her. Oh, okay, thank you.
They've been doing it for a long time, they have been.
Ever since I've been on board, yes.
All right, ready for vote?
Should we fill in the blank with an amount, because I'm not sure what the liability amount should be?
Robin. I believe it's $1 million, I think that would be a safe amount to put in. Yeah, she addressed, she addressed her...
Right. And I assume that was...
Yeah.
So $1 million?
Do we need to amend that?
Yeah, you can, you can move to amend it.
Do I get a motion to amend?
Do I get a motion to amend?
Second.
All those in favor?
Yeah, move it as amended.
Yes.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Okay.
Next, resolution 1352015.
A resolution providing for appropriation for design of our Riverwalk, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Waterville, acting as municipal officers as follows, that an amount not to exceed $20,000 be appropriated from the remaining 2004, 2005 waterfront bond money to prepare design and engineering specifications for the eventual construction of the Riverwalk at the head of dollars. The remaining funds in the bond account total $20,76.
Move to it down.
Second.
My teaser fund that was specifically dedicated was purpose, weren't they? They weren't specifically dedicated for that purpose, but they're specifically dedicated for the waterfront. Right, and that was ten years ago, a little bit more, the city borrowed the money 2004, 2005, so really, we should've set the money by now on the purposes described, waterfront improvements was definitely one of those purposes in that original bond money. It was about a year ago, last December, that you approved an order for $2,500, which allowed us to do this conceptual design of a walkway, and that's all it is, is a pretty good design. There's no engineering to it, there are no specifications on how it will develop, and that really is the next step, is to get the help of an engineer to provide, prepare the specifications so that we could hire someone to build it, hopefully, hopefully, someday. So, what I wanted to do also is to pass out a proposed timeline for how we see the task going forward for this project. I do have some extra copies here.
So Mike, this is kind of the next probably necessary step, how do we know that we have the 150,000 from Rotary?
Correct.
To get started.
Right, Rotary has said that their 150 is good, they did not want to spend any money upfront on the design, they'd rather have us come to them with a design, so it'll be something a lot more specific than this, and that's what really we need to do next, is probably to form a committee, develop a request for proposals that we send out, I think in the next month or so, to engineering firms, get those responses back, choose a firm, of course, the council will choose that, so we'll be back to you with the recommendation after we interview some firms, do the design work through the winter, so in the spring, we have something a lot more specific, that we can then go out and fundraise further, because as you can see on the timeline, the construction is not proposed really until 2017. That's because Rotary Club was hoping in their 100th year celebration in 2018, to have a ribbon cutting and a dedication, so building in 2016 wouldn't fit that very well, since their 100 year is in 2018. We start in 2017, finish the landscaping site work in 2018, then you could do the round break, I mean, the ribbon cutting at that one.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you. We'll be back.
I'm excited to be listed as a committee member, I wish I could thank you.
Well, it's your award, and I didn't talk with you, but I assumed that was gonna be okay.
Next, resolution 1362015.
A resolution providing for issuance of a poll permit to Central Maine Power on A Bar Road, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Waterville, acting as municipal officers as follows, that the city council hereby authorize the issuance of a poll permit to Central Maine Power, this permit will allow for the installation of one utility pole located approximately 1,640 feet north of Trapping Road on A Bar Road.
Move to it down.
Second. All those in favor? Next, order 1372015.
An order providing for amendment to order number 156 dash 2012, be hereby ordered by the city council of the city of Waterville, acting as municipal officers as follows, whereas order number 156 dash 2012 was approved in September 2012, see attached, to provide a $100,000 loan to the Friends of Corry Road to construct a maintenance building, and whereas the Friends of Corry Road have made good faith efforts to repay the entire amount with a recent final payment of $25,000, and whereas the Friends of Corry Road have raised almost $2 million for equipment, buildings, and other improvements at the Corry Road Recreation Area over the past five to seven years, and whereas the Friends of Corry Road have committed to spending the recent $25,000 payment on continued improvements at the site, now therefore, be hereby ordered by the city council, acting as municipal officers, to return the $25,000 check to Friends of Corry Road, and to accept $75,000 as the full payment for the city's financial commitment.
Move to it down.
Second. Is there anybody from Corry Road here tonight?
I don't see anyone.
I don't think so.
Okay. Well, I have the check here, I'm gonna give it to you.
I'm on the board.
Well, I'll give it to you.
And that's good.
Is there probably no need for political discussion on this, since we had a good discussion last night?
We had a good discussion.
All those in favor?
No.
All of you in favor? Next, order 1382015.
An order providing for sale of city property 13 Ann Street, be hereby ordered by the city council of the city of Waterville, acting as municipal officers as follows, that the city manager be authorized to accept a high bid of $10,000 submitted by Mr. Sweers for the vacant tax-acquired property located at 13 Ann Street, and that the balance of said funds after payment of all outstanding taxes, interest in fees, demolition costs, water, and super balances be placed in the city's self-debted capital improvement account.
Move to it down.
Wait, anybody to talk about that?
This was the only bid that we received, it's a very fair price, the lot is a bill of the lot, someone could build another home there, but it's very important for the neighboring property owner for him to be able to build a garage there, so assessment-wise, Paul Costangue thought that, you know, the lot may be in the $8,000 to $10,000 range, so I think that the bid is a very fair offer.
Just a second.
I recommend we accept it. I can go to a vote, all those in favor?
Thank you.
Next, ordinance 1392015.
I'm three, I'm top one.
Second.
All those in favor?
An order providing for vacant building ordinance.
Move to it down. Second.
Discussion.
Counselor? I prefer it as a council name. Yeah, this is a vacant building ordinance that has, bulk of this work has been done by Fred, this is something that again is a supplement to Maine state law for vacant buildings, and something that all kinds of communities in the state of Maine are starting to adopt, for various reasons, the most important reason is to reduce the blight of properties in fellow neighborhoods, like all of us on this council have many opportunities, walking the streets or driving around, can testify or have had discussion with constituents like I have just recently, I've had extensive discussions with some of my constituents about some dangerous properties, some foreclosed housing, even some commercial buildings that pose threats to the community as far as criminal activity, safety concerns for children, and various other issues. At the end of the day, I know that I like to come home, and I know that my constituents in my neighborhood like to come home, and it has been said to me many a time from several of them, that they want to come home to, you know, a safe and secure place, something that's not gonna devalue them from a property evaluation standpoint, you know, there's, we've had, I've had constituents tell me, and I've actually gone to see for myself, where properties have had fencing that has been dilapidated, swimming pools, in-ground swimming pools that are inside that dilapidated fencing that pose a threat to children going in and being injured. This ordinance would help protect that and have teeth to it, and, you know, there's a lot of safety concerns, there's a lot of concerns about criminal activity, there's a lot of concerns about the devaluation of property, and nobody wants to look out the window and see something like this that just continues to deteriorate. The town of Winslow just recently passed an ordinance with some good teeth and a resembling of the city of Bangor, which also has, City of Augusta has just in the final stages of their own vacant building ordinance, so all around us, our neighbors are picking up and supporting not only this from a state standpoint, but from a local standpoint, and I definitely support a vacant building ordinance. Yes, there are other things to consider, the enforcement of this, the long-term ramifications of this, as far as, we do see this as a source of revenue that would come in to city coffers and would help, you know, with us as far as the budget standpoint, but at the same time, we realize that we probably need more personnel to enforce it. I think there would be a lot of voluntary compliance with just having this ordinance on the books, so I really, I really feel like a lot of, a lot of this is simply would be in our best interest from a city standpoint to have something like this on the books, and to have some sort of teeth to it, and then we can again explore the personnel aspect of properly enforcing this down the road.
Counselor Stuffer?
I realize the majority of the council is seeing this for the first time, and if the council wishes, I would be willing to table this to give you more time to review it, to come up with questions, and even suggestions, or perhaps modifications. I've already come up with a couple of ideas myself, and probably what we ought to do is table it and then debate it at the first meeting in November.
Counselor, just to be clear for people who are here, and me, I know kind of the background, there were recent, very, very recent updates to this, to conform this a little bit by the city attorney.
This has been in the works since last spring.
It has, but the reason you're suggesting, when you say that this is the first time people have seen it, we don't want people to think that we just throw things callously out, this has been going on for a long time, city attorney just...
The reason, the version that you're looking at now is here, is that I met with the city attorney last week, and he suggested some major changes. What we did initially with the help of Nancy Williams and a few other people in the community, we put together a compilation of what other communities around the country have done. When Bill Lee saw it, he said, well, some of these things don't completely agree with Maine law, so we modified it again last week to make it agree with Maine law, because Maine now has vacant building law requiring all vacant buildings in the state to be registered. And they got all four closed doors, and it opens the door for municipal families to have some teeth in their own local apartments. So anyways, I'm suggesting that you may want a couple more weeks to look at this and come up with some fresh ideas. I'd like to make a motion to table this under respect of the fellow councils to further... Well, a couple of questions, Andy, Counselor...
Are you chairing his meeting?
Yes.
Randy Cocteau, should have questions.
Counselor?
I am as supportive as, and the reason being that, when we start enforcing these laws, we don't end up with health that that we're on vote street, that horrible mess we had on vote street that took us apart to tear it down, and I know especially in the South End area, there's a lot of vacant buildings, which do depreciate the homes around them. This has been a long time in the maintenance, it should've been many years ago that it was completed, and I think by enforcing this, it will clean up some of the South End areas, it will prevent absentee landlords, it will prevent drug dealing, it will prevent all these other things that are associated with this, often enough, the different priorities that some consider maybe will, you know, more associated economically, so this is a long time coming, and the council should absolutely support this 100%.
Counselor Bujan?
Is there a way that we can have guards here to also, I guess I feel...
We have met with God.
So it's even part of this process of creating this, and he's gonna fall on his shoulders to actually enforce this?
What we think, Counselor Bujan, is that he won't have enough time to enforce this, and as Counselor Mayhew said, a lot of this will be voluntary, but in talking with the city manager, what I told him is that, again, the council, when budget time rolls around, should be considering a second code officer, for a variety of reasons, not only for this, but for other things as well. This is going to have a registration fee with it, a permanent fee.
Well, I guess that's my question is, is when you say volunteering, who in their right mind is gonna voluntarily pay $200 for a vacant property?
Well, there is teeth in the state law now, and some buildings are required to register.
For foreclosure, right?
They thought, right?
For foreclosure?
Yes, yes.
But this, our, we want to cover all vacant properties.
Right.
I do believe it's beneficial for the city, I'm just worried that we might be going backwards, like hiring somebody new and then bringing on this kind of, rather than bringing on this, and then hopefully we, and remember, we had a code enforcement officer in the budget, and we ended up cutting that person, so I'm just, I'm just a little worried, because we already have a code enforcement officer who's already overtaxed, that we make sure that when we bring something like this that would be beneficial to many parts of the city, that it's done correctly, and it's done the way that we would want it to be done. So I just want to have that discussion, I guess, which is probably why it would be great to table it and be able to ask those questions, but I thank you for your work, and for Nancy's work, and at the South End, and you all have been looking at vacant buildings and really studying that, I just want to, I just really want to make sure that we don't just pass things because it sounds good and it feels good, that we actually pass things that can actually be put in motion and make a difference.
Can you hear who that...
We have, we have a motion.
Okay, is there a second on the motion to table?
Sure.
And is that to a definite date?
To the next council meeting. For 18, November 12.
All those in favor?
Is there some people that we have, like, I'm not saying a public meeting, but something a little forum that people can actually come to and ask questions on this justice ordinance?
I would defer that to the senior.
Michael?
Yeah, why can't they come to the next council?
Well, I'm just saying, I'm saying before the meeting, I'm, that's all I'm saying.
If the council wants to schedule something, I'll certainly make it happen. Do we have it averted?
When are you gonna come up with your next version, Fred, you know?
This is the version.
This is the next version. Well, I thought you said you've done some things. Yeah, I'm gonna suggest a couple additions. Yeah, there's a couple clauses that he's, he wants to put in there, like the waiver for the property, I forgot. What happened was, I met with Bill, told him what I wanted, and he didn't get all the information to my...
Yeah, there's a couple of clauses that he wants to put in there, like the waiver for the property that's not...
What happened was, I met with Bill, told him what I wanted, and he didn't get all the information to Mike, and it was already printed in your hands before I got a chance to tell him.
Right, so there is some revisions that need to be made, and the final copy should be going to the next council meeting. This is the, this is the very...
We're moving on. Thank you.
I think manager's report is next. Thank you for mentioning that we meet not next Tuesday the 3rd, but Wednesday the 4th, which is Election Day, so we'll meet Wednesday a week from now. The employee dinner is this Friday night, so any of you are very welcome to attend the employee dinner at the, what used to be called Pete and Larry's, it's at the Waterville Grand Hotel now. So that begins at 6:00.
6:00.
Yep, 6:00 o'clock, you're welcome to attend. If you are coming, it helps if you let us know between now and Friday. Tomorrow afternoon, 4:00 in this room is the third meeting of the Solid Waste Group. Tomorrow, we're going to hear about composting and also a presentation from EcoMaine about if our solid waste were to go to their facility, what would it cost? How would it happen? This is all part of the process of evaluating all of our options for dealing with our garbage. When our contract with Perk expires, again, that's two and a half years away, but we can't wait. Only last time wants to figure it out, so we're starting the process of interviewing all the potential options. And that really starts tomorrow, 3:30 tomorrow afternoon. Yep. Any of you have gotten letters in the mail? I know I got one, from our assessing office, saying that we need to schedule in-house inspection for the reval.
Here you go.
You got one? Do you remember deadlines there? I don't remember the deadline for responding. I know I'm going to let them in. Pretty sure. So I just want to mention that the fall and into the winter is an important time for them to finish up. A lot of this is residential, because they've been working on the commercial side of things through the summer. Now they're trying to finish up the residential by doing interior inspections. If you do let them in, it's a very quick thing, I think in 10 minutes they're gone. Basically, they look at what we already have on record for your interior dimensions and fixtures, and everything is the same, everything looks the same, you know, bathrooms, you know, bedrooms, big. So it's not a long drawn-out thing. Last thing on my list was the properties that we've sold, tore down. I think we've made very good progress. Glidden Street, the property off Cool Street, I don't know if Counsel Stuffer is familiar with that one, near the Vesselonski Street, that was sold to the butter. Tonight, of course, on your agenda was Ann Street. Public Works tore that house down, sales to the butter. Finally, it looks like with Temple Court. Over that way, right? The building back down, Corey's. We finally, Bill Lee, I think has finally reached an agreement with the purchasers. So the purchase and sale contract for Temple Court is done, I believe. Be looking at closing soon. And, oh, the last one is Oak Street. The house that burned down on Oak Street, which's been three years now. Of course, it's another one the city had to pay to tear down, because the owners just walked away from it. We have sold that lot, Tuna Butter, you handled that sale a few weeks ago. You approved that sale a few weeks ago, so that's happening. And the next one that I know about is Gold Street. The property, again, that we tore down, the building on the hill. I know Counsel Ray Quon Thomas remembers that one. That foreclosure is not until February. So that'll be another piece of property that I believe the city will end up owning and look to sell to the butter or anything. So I think we've made very, very good progress on cleaning up some real derelict properties and putting the property back into taxpaying status. I'm happy to answer, any questions on that or anything else?
How's the closing of the cemetery going? Are they getting ready to close down?
Yes, the cemeteries, right. They are getting all of that closed up. The big thing now is the leaf collection. So Matt and I talked about that today. As a matter of fact, I'm glad you mentioned it, because at the meeting on November... I think it'll be November 17th, the second meeting in November, I've asked Matt to come in with Patty and give us a report on the cemeteries. And, you know, we had to pick it up all of a sudden in June, and it was tough at the beginning. So there's a big decision to be made. Does the city continue to contract out the mowing and care of cemeteries? Or can we do it on our own? And we think we can do it on our own, that is a very significant savings. So that's what Matt wants to talk about in a couple, yeah, a couple meetings from now. But I think that, I want, I do want to take this time to say to him and Patty and the public works that they did a great job stepping in to the breach and even things like that.
I think we've shared a few times this year, and it looks great.
Yeah. Yeah.
Have you had birrowage?
Mike, I can't say thank you.
We've had areas. Yep, we've had stellar areas. Yep, you know, we managed to have someone be able to dig the graves, because a former person has gone for that, too. The last thing I want to say was congratulations to Counsel Winslow for 25 years on the sandwich program. I know you were there at the beginning.
It was your first night.
Well done.
We actually had more people working, getting ready to serve the food than people showed up, so.
The first night, you mean?
The first night, yes.
Did you actually eat some of the food, too? Is that a rumor?
Yes, we did. I totally enjoyed it, what can I say? You take advantage of all of it.
Yeah, I do.
Yes.
Well done.
No. As a matter of fact, one of the, one of the ladies from the union church who was sitting in the back row, she was one of... She is the only other person who is still alive today. Participated that evening.
Wow.
So. That was the babe.
I'm sure she made the soup that night, too.
She did make the soup that night.
Rosemary was there.
She was good. I wish.
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.